We should be good now. He said 30 seconds, about a minute ago.
Oh, okay.
We're good?
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call and be the Salisbury City Council Work Session of April the 2nd, 2018, order. We have several items on the agenda tonight, and we will start with Flora Soper, relative to the RISE Zone application. Come on up. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Very good.
So I'm sure, as you saw, in partnership with Salisbury University, we are interested in pursuing a RISE Zone designation for the corridor stretching from the university down to downtown Salisbury. The aim of this program is to spur development and community revitalization in that specified area, and it requires a partnership with Salisbury University. The first step they had to do was they had to become a qualified institution, which required an application process. And then, once they became a qualified institution, which they did in April 2017, we were eligible to apply for the RISE Zone. Essentially, the tax credit is very similar to the enterprise zone, except it's five years. So we mirrored it after the enterprise zone. So it's 80 percent for the first five years, and then it's done. And then, the state income tax credit is the same as well. The reason we mirrored it was because the mayor expressed interest in pursuing a TIF zone in that area. So that was really the goal of why we're going for it. And the nice benefit of the TIF zone is that it can be used on tenant improvements, which most TIF zones cannot. So if there are any questions on that, let me know. The area is nearly 130 acres, and like I said, it stretches from the university to downtown.
So essentially, it goes down to the river?
Yep.
With the exception of the hospital?
Yeah, and I think we included their parking lot area as part of it, but not the actual hospital.
Well, hopefully, this will inspire people to upgrade. So is the process similar to the enterprise zone for application?
Very similar, aside from the TIF zone part, which we would have to designate. But the application process is the same, the reporting is the same, so it would be very easy to replicate.
Questions?
To say, we were one of the places that legislators in Annapolis brought into the conversation three years ago, when they were considering creating this Salisbury, Towson, College Park, and UMBC areas. And, you know, so they engaged us in conversations a couple of years ago about this. And it's been kind of a long process to actually designate, you know, one of the areas. But, you know, they, the university had to get approved as a qualifying institution. That was a long part of the process. But they've now done that.
And another part of it was, we were originally looking at the downtown for that area. But when you apply for the RISE Zone, you can't have an overlying tax district, which the downtown does. So we realized that the Route 13 corridor, especially with the amount of development that it's seeing, would be another great area to focus that on, so.
Yeah. Other questions?
Just, I was gonna ask, and I couldn't remember the exact changes to the historic district, but we, did we line this up?
Um, I don't think it...
You know, just looking at it, it almost, the, they almost abut one another.
Yeah.
There's a little bit of a gap between the two.
Between Waverly...
Some of the properties, yeah, between Waverly and...
Between Waverly and 13.
13. There's, that would be sort of the gap. That being said, that certainly could be, you know, an area that was included.
No, I just wondered with the minutia of...
I can get you a map with that overlay if you'd like.
And then I was just gonna ask about the going over into Times Square, and how would that give us an opportunity to do something with them, that property across the street?
It certainly, it certainly would with that, that zone area, so.
Part of the thought of reaching north of the hospital.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? We do have one request for comment from the audience, Riley Smith. As always, you have four minutes to give us your thoughts.
I guess my main question is, when you say property tax credit, is, can anyone already there, or an existing property, get a tax credit?
It's for existing commercial properties, and it's based off any change in assessment when there's an investment in the property. So if your property, your commercial property was worth $50,000, and the assessment changed to $100,000, you would see the credit on that change in the $50,000.
Okay, so let's say there's a, well, a house, a rental house. Is that considered eligible for the credit?
That's a house.
Yeah, residential uses are not eligible.
Oh, so, okay, well, I'm noticing that it's in Hanover Street area, and there are like four or five houses, plus Cynthia Place. So in order to develop that, they would have to put in a new business?
It would have to be a commercial use, correct.
So they have to tear all those down, right? Which is okay with me.
Well, I don't think that they'll be tearing it down. It's more so geared towards existing and new commercial development, so.
Okay. So you're talking about, it's more or less a new business, plus any business there, it, over what, say $50,000, and then they get another $50,000? Is that what the tax credit's based on?
The tax, so that increase in $50,000 would see the credit on that assessment. So it's an 80 percent credit on the taxes. So it's not a full...
Oh.
Yeah.
Wait a minute. Well, it is a full, okay, let's say the property, property's there, right?
Yes.
All right, they add, they improve it by 50 percent. So it was a $50,000 property, now it's $100,000. What's the tax credit?
So the credit would be, and it would depend on the tax assessment, so...
Well, let's say it's assessed at $100,000.
Okay, so it's assessed at $1,000, $100,000, they see the increase of $50,000, whatever that tax rate is, county and city, they would receive 80 percent abated from that.
The whole thing?
Of the, no, just the increase in assessment.
The 50, the increase in the assessment?
Yes.
I got it, okay. Because here's my point. Once again, we're funding the residents, and I'm only speaking for the residents, and, well, I'm speaking for anyone that has to pay real estate taxes there. We're funding this tax credit again. And it just worries me that, is this gonna be added on? Is this in the budget?
This isn't, this isn't a funding.
A tax credit is not a funding. You don't, that is not funding.
Well, someone's got to, if you're reducing taxes, where's this, is it money?
No.
That they're not paying?
That's right, for, that no one would ever be paying.
Ever?
That no one would ever otherwise pay.
Okay, well, but it reduces the value of the assessed property.
No.
And if their property...
No, it increases the value of the assessed property.
So it goes, after the five years, is when the full assessment hits, and then they would be paying their full taxes with the new assessment price.
Okay.
If you take it in S and Hs, let's go, let's find one of the parallel. The person will buy a house in a neighborhood that is at risk, and they're, they will have a tax abatement over five years. It'll go 20, 40, 60, 80, 100, so they're paying the whole thing.
Right.
It's an incentive to get people to do something in this area that is new.
That they wouldn't otherwise do.
They wouldn't otherwise do.
In the year of the 20, the city doesn't get the 80 percent that they would be paying?
No, the city doesn't get the 20, the 20, in the year of the 20, the city receives 20, that, above what it was ever receiving before.
Because there was nothing there.
It's new money to the city, no matter what, no matter how you count.
Okay, so the answer is, only new construction, even if there's existing construction there?
Yes.
Okay, I get it. So it's only the increase in the value?
Yes.
Got it. Okay.
Okay, time's up.
Okay. Who's paying for the financial assistance, too?
What financial assistance?
The priority consideration.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Well, this is a free country. Are we not allowed to speak to our government?
Absolutely, and you had four minutes to do that, which is our standard, what we do for everybody.
Okay.
So I'm being censored, just waiting for some...
That's your words, not mine.
My words.
Okay. Any other questions? Then do we have consensus? Okay, thank you, Laura.
Thank you. I'm gonna just stay up here for the next thing.
Why don't you stay up here for the next thing? Hopefully, this'll be easy. Right ahead.
Okay. So you've seen me before for this. Basically, we've sold more merchandise in the downtown visitor center, and we have to do a budget ordinance to move that money back into our funds. As you can see, it's a total of $957.86 since October 2017.
Okay. Any questions? Consensus moving forward?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, is the chief here?
She is on her way.
Okay, so...
Probably in a couple of minutes.
That one, she's got two. Is Susan here?
No.
Okay.
Oh, moving too fast.
We'll just go to council discussion.
Well, let's do this. Let's go to the Merritt Mill. They're gonna have to wait when they get here.
No problem.
So what's Amanda?
I'll get her up here right now.
First one shows up, goes.
They're getting to be here.
There you go. For credit.
For credit.
She's coming. She'll be here in 30 seconds.
30 seconds?
Set your timer.
Hey, Amanda.
Close, 45.
I think you can come on up.
You're not late, we're early.
I was watching for my guests.
Where are you?
You heard us calling your name.
Good afternoon.
We're at the end of your agenda.
Yes.
Thank you for taking us.
Yeah.
So we're here to talk again about the Merritt Mill Townhouse Annexation Agreement modifications.
Right.
We were here two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Part of what we were discussing last time was the installation of the sidewalk along Merritt Mill Road and Tillman Road. So I'm gonna turn it right over to Patrick to give his presentation.
So, good afternoon, first off. Patrick Stewart again, I'm with Penrose. Been here a couple of times. I just want to say thank you all for your time again. I noted that a few of the residents that live next door are here again, and wanted to say thank, just thank them for their time as well. So, just very briefly, sort of a recap of the project. This is something that we're very excited about doing. We're 100 percent behind it. We think it's gonna be a positive for the city. Penrose is the lead developer. We're also gonna be the property manager, so we're in it for the long haul. You know, we're long-term owner, operator, property manager. I know that some of the residents have raised concerns, things that sort of touch on operational issues, and just want to sort of reiterate that. The majority of communities that we develop, we maintain for the, for the long term. You know, we're a large company, we have tons of capacity, and we have done this before, and we have won awards. And this is, the point is not to say we're so great, it's just that we know what we're doing, and have that capacity, and have that accountability for the long term. So I guess focusing on a couple of the details that have come up. There was the question of sidewalks. And I, you know, I don't, I don't know if that's necessarily the place to start, but there was a question of whether the project could add additional sidewalks to construct down Merritt Mill to Tillman Road. And so, we wanted to sort of follow up on that. I know some folks within DIP took a look at putting together a cost estimate. So my understanding, from what I've seen, is that the cost estimate was somewhere in the neighborhood of about $200,000.
I can joke, I'll joke in there for that part, sure.
But that was for both, for...
Yes, so, if you all can see, so that goes all the way from the property down Merritt Mill Road, down Tillman Lane, and to connect to the shopping center, so you could actually get in the shopping center. So it's about 2,700 feet of sidewalk, and the ADA ramps that would be necessary. So the piece in front of their property is in that, you know, $20,000, $19,000 to $21,000 range that we were talking about last time. That full extension, we had estimated at around $199,000, so right around $200,000.
What is the cost to Tillman Road, though?
Just to Tillman would be, let's see, that was only about 800 feet. So it would probably be in the, if, let's see, about a third of that, so maybe in the $80,000 range. A little bit less, possibly. So the roads are county roads there, there's roadside swales, there's utility poles, mailboxes, so there would be some challenges to construction of sidewalk in those areas. They are putting the piece in on the frontage of their property.
Right.
Either way, I mean, that is part of the requirements.
Right.
So, right, so I did, looking, looking at this aerial site plan, Amanda just noted it, but, but yes, we're, we'd be constructing public sidewalks in, in front of the Merritt Mill property. So, the question was asked at the last session, whether the project could, could take that on at that, based on the sort of extensive nature of that, that scope of sidewalk improvement. I think that is not something that our project would be able to add into the scope or the budget. What I did want to note is that, and we've put together a little summary of what are sort of the, what do you wanna call it, economic or fiscal benefits, that the, that the project is going to be contributing to the city. And I know, you know, I'm kind of jumping into the, to the impact fee, capacity fee discussion. We, we did make a couple requests for fee reductions, but even if those were taken into account, the project is gonna contribute, and I'll pass these out, over $600,000 to the city upfront, in terms of upfront fees. One of those fees is called for in the annexation agreement. It's for reinvesting in existing neighborhoods, and it's a fee of a little over $3,000 per unit. And what I wanted to sort of just, you know, have as a possible discussion point is, is that an appropriate, that sidewalk reconstruction, is that an appropriate use for that fee contribution to the city? The way it's worded in the annexation agreement is, it's for, well, it's what it is, it's reinvesting in existing neighborhoods, beautification, restoration, revitalization, which would contribute that fee alone, $231,000, which would cover the cost of those sidewalk improvements. So I think part of what we want the city to consider is that this project is creating an opportunity for the city to, to do some things, to construct some area improvements that, you know, may not have been an opportunity without this project.
So you're asking, could we use that money to do the sidewalk?
That, that's sort of what, what we're thinking. We're, I mean, that fee alone would, would cover the cost of, of improvements like this.
Would this be the first time, Amanda, that we would have used a particular fee to do a particular project, instead of having it just go back into the general fund?
Usually, it goes into that, that specific fund that we would use for those. So yes, we typically don't have that earmark necessarily.
So we have no, there's no plans that have taken this $231?
No, not specifically, correct.
If, you know, if I could, Mr. Mayor, just, part of the, if I remember correctly, well, let me ask a question first. What is the landscaping that would be on, between Merritt Mill, or on the front side? What would be the, what's in front? Is there gonna be shrubberies, is there gonna be trees?
Along, along Merritt Mill?
Yeah.
It's, it's the bio-retention, aren't there gonna be bio-retention areas there?
So, which, yeah, this, so here's sort of an outdated perspective rendering. I think this, this is probably the best illustration of it. And, you know, honestly, I don't think that piece is necessarily set in stone. We don't have all, all of the site plan approvals, but the proposal would be some trees, plantings along Merritt Mill. I'm not, I'm not sure if that's answered or not.
Okay.
And again, you know, I don't have a detailed landscape plan per se.
But, you know, all told, I think on the site, we're doing, including what's in the back, and in the interior of the site, there's gonna be something like 160 trees added.
Right.
Several of those will certainly be along Merritt Mill. If that's a particular, you know, sort of concern, or interest point, we can, we can talk with the civil engineer, the landscape architect, about, about focusing some of those plantings along that road.
One of the things we had talked about was a buffer.
That's between the two properties.
Right, between the two properties.
Some people are wanting a fence, some people are more comfortable with trees. We're putting this complex on an island. There, there's no real services available to the individuals that will be occupying this space. There'll be a lot of young people with really nothing to do. And I fear that nothing we're discussing at this time is responsive to the concerns of the individuals that reside in this community. What they're concerned about is, is the young people that are gonna be there that have nothing to do, and don't have access to anything. The traffic backups that are gonna occur as you leave Merritt Mill and you hit old Ocean City. People walking through the current community to get to the shopping center. We've said that there's gonna be a path, but we haven't said, if the shopping center is in agreement, you know, we don't know what's going to happen with these monies that, that are going to be called neighborhood reinvestment. How are we gonna make this a more livable community for the people that currently reside there, and the people that are going to come in there? I just, we're doubling the population in this area, more than doubling it, actually. And we aren't putting in any additional minions. And, and part of this is, are, are questions that, that deserve to be answered by the city. You know, we understand that there was a traffic study. I haven't seen it, I don't know where we stand, truly, how close we are, you know, is it, what was the evaluation? What was the outcome of that traffic evaluation that was done? It's just, there's more questions. I'm, I'm very uncomfortable with this at this time.
Well, I think they're separate issues, and I think we, we need to look at them individually. I mean, we're making some assumptions about what the kids are gonna do, et cetera. Now, there's gonna be a tot lot there, there's gonna be stuff for them to do on their, on the site. Correct?
Correct. So again, the square in the, in the center of the site?
Right.
You know, about 25 percent of it will be taken up by, you know, playground equipment tot lot, which, in our experience, for, you know, for the size of a development, that's, tends to be pretty appropriate. It's not necessarily the case that every apartment is gonna be occupied by families with children. So that's something to consider. It's not that, you know, out of the 75 units, there will be 75 more children necessarily.
I, I don't think that would necessarily be untrue, because once you have the two and three bedroom apartments, typically those will be families that reside there.
Right, well, there, there are also a number of one-bedroom apartment units.
So then that raises the question, how many one-bedroom apartments? What is that ratio?
It is, I think I have that.
Mr. President, would it be valuable at all to talk about the, what's actually on the table today, and the, the difference between by right and, and what's actually negotiable? I mean, because we haven't really done that. And because by right, let's remember that 72 units can be built without this, you know, without the council ever weighing in.
Right.
Without any discussion, without any, you know, traffic analysis, without any of that. That's just by right on this piece of property can always be done by anyone. You know, the discussion is, you know, that the city gets to have. What we get to do at the table is to discuss, you know, whether or not we want to amend that, you know, and provide for the 74th, 73rd, 74th, 75th units, and what the impacts of those three units might be, and have that discussion, and waive fees and things like that. Or not.
And I think, from my perspective, one of the things that I'm weighing, and I understand the concerns, and I, and I appreciate them, but by the same token, I've seen what their work is. And it's there. And, and the people who are there, and I see them all the time because I deliver Meals on Wheels there, I will tell you that those people are thrilled with those apartments. So I'm saying, in my mind, we have a known quantity that's proven themselves, and there's an example sitting right there. Do we risk that for somebody who comes in and wants to full-blown develop it with no help?
Would somebody who, I, I wanna get back to sidewalks. We're, we're going to a macro discussion right now.
Right.
Wouldn't if somebody who could afford to come in and do market rate, and had already done it?
But, we could ask them, we could ask them to do it, but we could only make them do it in front of their own place, correct? Am I right, Mr. Mayor?
I don't know. I mean...
Yeah, I was saying, about the sidewalks, even if you could get them to go all the way around to the food line, you'd still have to get permission from all those properties.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. It's, I mean, it's not an easy, that's not an easy thing.
Well, and, and the only point I was trying to make is just that, while, while we're having a discussion about, you know, traffic, or, you know, kids, or impact, you know, the city doesn't have the authority or the power to, to stop that. I mean, we have no power to stop that. That is by right.
Yeah.
You know, anyone who owns that piece of property can do that. You know, that's, that's regardless of the annexation, I mean, that is just, that is by right on that piece of property. And, and that's true with any piece of property. There are certain things you can do and can't do by right. The, you know, the question here is, do we want to change, you know, the agreement, which the question is over three units, and it's over fees and sidewalks and things like that.
I, I understand completely.
I just didn't, you know...
But my, my point...
I wanna make sure we're all understanding the restrictions that, you know, the city has, which is...
Absolutely understood. But also, we have citizens who have concerns.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And I want to hear what they are.
Absolutely.
And we're gonna see if, we're gonna see if, if we can mitigate, if they, if Penrose can help mitigate some of those concerns. But I, from my perspective, I like the project. I, I, because I, I've seen it. I've seen what it can do. I've seen how it can transform people's lives. I can. So if we can see some kind of, and I think that by putting the square in, and the tot lot, and all those things, I think you've, you've shown some things. I, I'm not sure what more we can ask of them, although I still like the sidewalk. But I understand the 200 grand, plus the fact, with all the permission, and I, I would almost guarantee, we're gonna, we'd have problems with some of the people there. But anyway... But anyway, um, that remains to be seen. But I, I get your point, Mr. Mayor. Any other comments or feedback?
Is it possible to use earmark particular money on this one?
That's our.
To go to sidewalk building?
Well, I think that's our, I think that's part of our responsibility here. We can earmark. Is it?
I, and that leads to a larger discussion of what are we doing with the other monies that we have?
I think we could, we could request that, that would be our preference to do that. I don't know.
I think you could put that in a contract, right? I mean, or, excuse me, put that in the annexation agreement. If you're amending.
They didn't take the money earmarked.
I don't know. I'd ask Amanda.
I, I think so. I just want to check how it's worded in the code, but I, I think we could probably specify that the reinvestment in existing neighborhoods be, be used for sidewalks in these, in these areas. I mean, that, that doesn't sound, you know, unreasonable, but I would just want to double check that.
If that's, if that's what we've listed the purpose of these funds, I think we can specifically say.
Now. Other comments?
Did we, did Penrose think at all about some of the suggestions from the neighbors about fencing or anything of that nature?
Uh, we did. And so we actually, I think it was actually at the planning commission meeting, we, we were discussing out in the hallway. Um, I want to. So, I'm trying to figure this out. But, um, so I think there are a couple of things going on. One is that the annexation agreement originally, you know, sort of required or requested that there be some sort of path activity through, through the site north to south connecting down to the shopping center. So we're trying to accommodate that request. What we're also hearing from adjacent neighbors is that they're seeing foot traffic coming this way and ending up, um, you know, walking between these buildings on their way over. Sometimes, you know, misbehaving and things like that. And what we're, so just to clarify, as Joe pointed out, that this map hasn't been cleared from day one, which I apologize about. But this is a path that we're providing from, you know, the sidewalk network connects to this path all the way down on our side of the property down to the shopping center. And as we discussed before, that's kind of as far as we can take it. That's the point where it becomes somebody else's property. But so from our perspective, as long as we can try to encourage that foot traffic that's already there to follow a path that's now on our property. That seemed to be the big concern from over here. Another concern or, or, or question or comment that was raised previously was what about the stormwater bond? And can we put up a fence between the properties? My question was if you put up a fence here, now you're preventing actually the people from this property from, from using the path. Maybe there's a happy medium where there's a partial fence, you know, and it goes down here and then you stop it here so that people can actually get from this property over to this pedestrian path. And that, that's something that we would absolutely consider doing. We didn't show it on the plan at this point. We need to get the money initially.
And let me ask the council, is the money that we're collecting through the fee better for a sidewalk or better to invest it into a really great path? That is a clear way there lit all the way to the shopping center? Because if there was a sidewalk from that side of the property, all the way down Merritt Mill and all the way down Parker Road, I don't know whether anybody would walk on the sidewalk to get to the food line.
And that's my point. You know, to this, what's they say, the straight line theory?
Right.
However, I could see preferably if I were there, I would walk down the path and walk over.
Then there's no cars.
And do keep in mind that, that their agreement requires them to put in that path.
Right.
So I, I don't think that's something we necessarily want to take on, but as, what you're commenting on is we could specify lighting and, and other things, you know, the width and, and things like that.
Personally, I like that better than the sidewalk. Because I think it's a, I'm not sure, I'm, if you're not going to have, I, I don't like fences, but that's okay.
Can I describe?
Does this connect anywhere close to all the bike trails coming from Beagle Park Drive? I'm just trying to figure out how all that, if this, if this property were from Beagle Park Drive, I think you'd be, you'd have been out of here.
Yeah.
You'd have been out of here in about 10 minutes, to be honest with you, because that's where, where.
Stuff is.
Where stuff is and where. So my question is, is there anything coming?
Coming down Old Ocean City Road towards this? Uh, not at this time.
Yeah.
The way the, the trail is referenced in the annexation agreement. The owner agrees to install, improve and dedicate an eight-foot wide pedestrian slash bicycle trail through the property. And to provide a 15-foot wide perpetual public use easement over the trail to the city assault.
What's the surface? Stone? Crushed down?
Uh, that, that's kind of what we're looking at. I, I don't think we want it to be pavement because we've got stormwater management concerns and things like that. So, yeah.
Yes, I understand. Yeah.
And just, just to quickly clarify, I wasn't trying to sort of dictate what the city does with that fee, just trying to sort of illustrate that if, you know, the city has a priority constructing sidewalks, this project is contributing, you know, financially towards whatever priorities the city may have in this neighborhood.
So the, the path is in there already, so we don't have to worry about that.
Correct.
So these fees could be used for anything. They're going, already going to do the sidewalk in front of their place.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right, we do have requests for several people that wanted to speak. Um, so we'll go in order which I received them. And again, I could, I'd like to remind everybody, and I think we, we know by this time, four minutes. If you're going to agree with the person that's in front of you, feel free to go up and say, I, I concur with what this gentleman or lady has just said. If you have something to add, we'd be happy to hear that. So let's go. First is Riley Smith.
I have no problem with anything with regards to the project, except what directly affects me and once again, the taxpayers. I was looking at the annexation agreement and I know I would much rather have a large national company building it than anyone else. But the annexation agreement stipulates a $2,000 unit contribution to affordable housing. The requested waiver equates to $134,000. Is the city essentially saying they're giving away $134,000? Okay, no answer.
No, we're, we're going to, does anybody want to take that one on? I, my answer's not going to be satisfactory, so.
It's, so that fee would be for a contribution to support other affordable housing and where this is affordable housing. It's, it's slightly contradictory. It probably wouldn't have been in their annexation agreement to begin with if it was affordable housing. Because that, that fee really helps to pay some of the other waivers, like the capacity fee waivers for affordable housing projects. So it would, it would be money not collected towards that purpose because it is an affordable housing project.
But then again, you get down to say at the current capacity fee rate of 3,533 per EDU, the waiver equates to $236,000. Is that in addition to the $134,000?
That's correct.
Okay, well, we've already had a 2% increase in water and sewer. Is this going to add to that for next year?
No, no one accounts for those monies as part of an operating budget. Those are extra monies if we get that development. That just goes into our bank account, our savings.
No, the 230, who's spending the 236,000?
No one.
Nobody.
That would, if, if you received that, let's say it was not affordable housing. So we don't ever charge affordable, we always provide this waiver for any affordable housing development. The city always has in all of its history, regardless of who's at the table. And the intent is to help affordable housing exist in Salisbury. And so that's not accounted for in budgeting. We don't budget for that revenue. We don't spend it. It just, just goes into our savings.
But otherwise you would have had an additional 234,000 in the fund.
That, in our, in our savings account?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Okay, so you are spending.
No.
I, I thank you.
Well, we can have a discussion about what, how, how to budget and what revenue and expenses are another time if you'd like.
No, I completely understand that. What I don't understand sometimes is the interpretation of council finance issues. That's all.
Next up is Emile Perella.
When the land was allotted to this, to this affordable housing project, um, well, that was in 2014? When was that agreement made?
Oh, the annexation agreement? Uh, yes, January of 2014.
2014. Were the current residents adjacent or close to the, the land informed that this will be affordable housing?
It was not annexed with that in mind at the time.
So, um, it, it may be for the, for the city council, it may be for you guys, it's a, a deal that's done. And has been talked about for several years, but for the residents who live there, we're just hearing this now. So I hope you can be patient with us because it's like, what did you just drop on our lap? That's, that's, that's our feeling at the moment. So, um, um, now, at, if you're a real estate agent or if you're a city planner, um, do you, how do you, what are the prerequisites for this land to be, um, to be allotted for affordable housing? Is there any prerequisite? Is there, or, or any land can be made into affordable housing?
Anybody could have brought in plans too?
Okay, okay. So, no, um, for affordable housing per se, let's say, um, because down the line, Parker Road, you have, um, single detached homes there, um, Heather Glen. So let's say there's an open land beside that, shorter, um, there's an open land beside that. Can that land be considered as affordable, can that land be allotted to affordable housing as well?
So I know, I know we have an attorney in the room, but as the only city planner in the room, I'll say this.
Yes?
Yes, you, you cannot discriminate based on, anywhere in America, based on affordability. So, so the price at which, uh, the thing that makes it affordable housing is the price at which it is rented. Not the design or construction or density or anything like that, or, or even the fact that it's multifamily versus single family attached or detached. So the thing that makes it affordable housing is just the rental agreement. And, and it is illegal to discriminate based on that. So to say something like, they should notify us because we're neighbors, because it's affordable, is actually illegal. The city cannot do that. The developer is under no obligation to do that because, you know, in, in the United States, that's, that's just not lawful. Um, and would violate our fair, violate fair federal fair housing act. So that's, that's, that's the difference between affordable and not affordable. Now, the other question is about density. You mentioned single-family housing down the street. You know, because it's zoned the way it's zoned and because it's the property adjacent to it is zoned the way it's zoned, you can build townhouses or apartments or things like that on the property. Uh, I don't know if you could build single-family detached.
I don't know off the top of my head for the zoning.
I'm not even, I'm not even sure if that could happen. Uh, but something similar to your property, I think would be legal on that property as well. But again, that would be separate, a separate issue from the rental price agreement. So the thing that makes it affordable.
If you, if you look at Parker Road, you use that as an example. When the, the road went across from the end of the space where the church was, where Brittanyham Square went in, which was a very long time ago. Because I lived there when I first started teaching in school in, um, there was out prior then, you have all these single-family homes along Parker Road. And you're going to put this road through here because now that part behind there is now annexed into the city. And the best use of that property, which at the time was market rate, it was not affordable housing. There was still out prior then, all of the traffic that was going into Brittanyham Square from Parker Road. Heather Glen is okay for people out there because it stayed in the county and they built single-family homes out there. What would be, what would cause consternation along further along Parker Road is when all those places that will eventually be inside the city limits of Salisbury do build multifamily housing and apartment complexes and townhouses. And those people who live on Parker Road, who were in single-family houses, now you have that many times that amount of people. And my feeling is that, is that what we're trying to do is trying to figure out a way to either connect the two properties in a way that allows them to coexist versus the argument or the discussion about the lack of infrastructure in the roads, the schools, and the concerns that you have about what's going in next door. Is that, is that plausible? Is that, is that?
Now, that, a way to connect the two properties, um.
Could you finish up, please?
Yes, sir. Um, maybe that's a discussion that you have, Penrose has to discuss with regards to, uh, discuss with the town home owners and the condominium homeowners. Do they, do they want access? Um, or, or not? And then I'd just like to, I'd just like to express that I do want some, a tree line or a fence. And you were talking about reinvesting that money for existing neighborhood, then maybe I agree with Mr.
It should be your neighborhood and then we reinvest.
Right, because we're actually, we feel like we're being displaced. Some of our neighbors are already thinking of moving out. Um, so you're.
We get your, we get your message. Thank you.
So, all right. Thank you.
Uh, next we have Virginia Bender.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I have a question as to the breakdown of the number of one, two and three bedroom apartments that are going to be built. Do you have the answer?
Right, right on hand? I do not. I apologize. Um, I think, Ms. Bender, can we, can we follow up with you via email?
Okay.
It's, I, I think out of one, two and three, most of them are two bedrooms. Um, Pat, do you have that?
I can pull it up.
Okay. And maybe before the session is over or right afterwards, we can, we can give you that information.
Uh, thank you. I'm still confused a little bit about the path that you're going to be building from the back of your, from the side of your property. The path back to the back of the shopping center. Could you explain that again to me? Exactly what's going to happen?
Sure. Um, so this, I'm trying to orient this so I can see it. So, um, I can open the process. The site, so this is Merritt Mill. The, the concept is that we have a network of sidewalks and walkways in the interior of the site. And that for anyone coming from these buildings, they would know to sort of walk, walk this way in the site. Once you get to this point, is where this path starts. And that takes you from, uh, from there all the way down to the southern end of the property, right where the shopping center is right there.
Over the gully?
Well, I'm not sure what you mean by.
I don't know. I'm sorry. I don't know the technical term for it. There is a cement. Thank you.
Back here?
At the end, at the end of the property.
Right here? If that's right behind the building, that's on the shopping center property, I think, if, if, if I'm interpreting what you're talking about. So, and again, I think there were, there was discussion about the city reaching out to the shopping center owner. But so we've take, we're taking the property as far as we can possibly take it right here so that them people won't, you know, end up behind your property and be able to walk to the shopping center from there.
Without coming onto our property?
That, that is the goal. It goes, you know, we keep it on our property, but the entire length of the way, right there.
And I don't quite understand what the council means when they want to have the properties connected as to be one property. We are a separate association now and we choose to remain that way.
I think, I, I didn't hear that, but as a, again, the resident city planner, I think I can explain. The, this suburban-style development where you create a road into a development separate from adjoining and adjacent properties is what causes traffic problems in cities. It's what causes environmental issues. It is what degrades cities over time rapidly. It is the very thing that we shouldn't allow ever again. It is the very thing that we shouldn't allow ever again, but we do. And we're not alone, we're not the only place in America that does it. Virtually everywhere does it. You know, until they adopt updated zoning laws, which we have not done, though it's going to be in the FY19 budget proposed. Connectivity between properties and connect, think a neighborhood like, an older neighborhood, like Camden or the President's Neighborhoods. There's no designation as to who built what when. It's, you know, houses facing streets, and all streets are connected on a grid. And that is the fundamental basis of a good functioning street system, a good functioning neighborhood system, a good functioning city plan. I'm sorry, I ate up. I should keep my mouth shut.
No, go ahead. You can finish up.
Ms. Bender? Ms. Bender, Virginia?
Thank you.
Did you have anything else?
I'm finished, thank you very much.
Thanks.
And I have the breakdown. It's eleven one-bedroom units, there are fifty two-bedroom units, and eleven three-bedroom units. I'm sorry, there are fourteen three-bedroom.
Okay, next up is John McGrath.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My message, I'm a resident, by the way, of Merritt Mill Condos, 2005 Whispering Pond Court. My message is just like, is a personal one. I moved down here, and I've only been here a year. But I moved down from Baltimore. And anybody that's familiar with Baltimore is the hustle and the bustle. And I lived in the city a little over sixty years up there. Forty-one of which I was in the Baltimore Police Department. I retired as a homicide detective. The main attraction for the area down here was being laid back. Royal atmosphere, get away from all the sirens and the helicopters and the paramedics racing up and down the street. And when I looked at the area, I was not only impressed with the living quarters, but also the environment around there, with the wooded area, the ponds, the quietness, kids playing on in the parking lot, hardly any traffic, and everybody got to know everybody else. And I fear that, I have seen in my time up in Baltimore, not that this would happen here, and there's no disrespect intended, is that I have seen comparable projects built in Baltimore. And I remember one in particular was over in the O'Donnell Heights section. They had four phases to it. They only completed phase one because it failed so bad. And again, that's my fear here, is that I hear people talking about sidewalks and street lighting, but when you live there, when you leave the environment or the neighborhood up there where the condos are, and soon as you get down to the bottom of the hill, it's almost the difference from night and day. The trash, all over the place. Not anymore, not only on the street, but in the pond itself down there. And it's very discouraging. I haven't heard anybody mention anything about crime. And I have experienced this in Baltimore City, where the crime went up thirty percent. And I think that's another issue that maybe, you know, I'm not, I don't have access to crime statistics here in your fair city, but I think it's something maybe to look into as well. And the other thing is, with the kids playing in the street and less traffic, of course, I know that's been discussed before, that the increase of traffic. And of course, what comes with the increase of traffic and people is the increase of noise. And so, you know, I'm used to hearing the geese and the ducks and the birds. I'm not, you know, looking forward to hearing car engines and smelling exhaust and it taking me several minutes just to get down to Merritt Mill Road, just to get someplace. You all know that Merritt Mill is a nice little shortcut to Old Ocean City Road. We've already, we contend already with the shopping center that's directly behind my building. And some of the noise that comes from there, especially when they empty their dumpsters and things like that, we also contend with Motor Vehicle Administration, the increase of traffic on Tillman Road, and the people going back and forth from that particular agency. So, I just wanted to bring that kind of a personal thing to your attention. And just have me consider it. And I'm done.
Thank you very much.
All right, sir.
Richard Pallone.
I also live at Whispering Ponds. I'm going to, I have four, maybe five items. This project, my understanding is that if you give the waiver, I, like everybody else, sees that as the city giving money into the project. I also understand that there's a loan being given by the state of Maryland for this project. So there's public money involved in the project. Since there's public money in the project, is there any MWBE requirements that are being placed on the contractor for minority and women businesses? That would be one question that I have.
Yes, the answer is yes.
Okay. Prevailing wage rates under Davis Bacon for employees?
All right, well, yes, Davis Bacon does apply. I couldn't tell you what the, off the top of my head, what the wages are.
Whatever they are, they are. In case there's local workers, they'll be making Davis Bacon prevailing wage. And once you're built, your employees maintaining the property will also be getting Davis Bacon.
That, the Davis Bacon applies to the construction contract.
Well, under the.
So not to the, not to the.
But there's Section Eight money involved in this, so there's HUD money coming into it.
There is, there is some HUD money coming into the project.
I'd leave it up to the counselor to look at the Fair Housing Act, as far as that goes. Then, the last, or one of the last items that I have is, somebody's got to be approving applications for the housing, and I would assume that's the housing authority that'll be issuing the contracts for housing?
No, it's, Penrose is a management company.
Even though there's federal money?
Screening applications, we'll be signing the leases, et cetera. We're in charge of management of, for that property.
Isn't there a requirement for housing assistance payment contracts?
Yes, but not, it's not managed by the housing authority.
But you'll be signing those with applicants?
Our management company.
Okay. So how are you going to check for US citizenship and criminal background?
That, so criminal background is part of, you know, typical screening process for us. As far as, to be honest with you, as far as citizenship goes, I don't know if that's part of our screening process. I can certainly look into that. It would certainly depend on, you know, sort of the legality of checking those kinds of things.
If, my understanding, again, under the Fair Housing Act, is if, if you're going to be signing housing assistance payment contracts to get Section Eight money, citizenship is required, or legal immigrant. Would have to be a legal immigrant or a US citizen before they could rent. So that, I think, should be checked.
I can check.
Now, this path here, I would prefer to see that as permeable asphalt if it's going to be a bike path. It's pretty hard to ride a bike on gravel. And permeable asphalt would take care of your drainage problem. And lighting it would certainly help us from a security point of view. And if traffic's an issue as a planner, you got eminent domain to acquire this property to go up here to Philip Morris. Am I right? Eminent domain?
Eminent domain across the property? Yeah, that's not something we've ever exercised before.
But it's an option.
In theory.
And the only other item that I have is, you've accommodated some of the younger kids in the tot lot, but there may be older teenagers or preteens. I don't see a basketball court or a handball wall. Just some of the amenities, because there's no schools near here for those kids to get to.
Thank you. Okay, summation, any other questions?
Is there a bus stop at the end of your, you have any children that get on buses in your development?
School buses?
Do they come into the development, or they just come right out on the road?
On the road.
Okay.
And I do agree with the gentleman that just spoke in reference to having access to basketball courts and things as such for the older kids, because that is a problem, even within our community, that's a problem, because there's no, it's nothing for the older kids to do. It's just the little kids that they have provided access for them. So, we have to look out for the younger and the older kids.
Ask a question, how many teenagers do you have in your development, do you know?
Ten hours.
Yeah.
They're mostly retired. Retired people up in the, up in the townhouses. There's probably five or six that are teenagers, but there are many of them that are ten, eleven, twelve years old.
Okay.
Playing in the street. And it would be nice if they could go to that tot lot or a basketball court that's next door.
We've come full circle. We've come full circle, we've gone from let's keep it apart to now, let's come together, which I like, but that's all right.
They're a separate entity, they're not part of us. The townhouses are separate.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying.
But that's where the kids are.
Right, I understand that, but we're saying exactly what we've been talking about. Okay.
Could I just add one thing, I didn't put my name in, to say one thing that would.
Could you, could you fill out the form and, we'd appreciate it for the record. We need to make sure that this is all done. Just go to the podium and just state your name, we can begin.
I'm Jody Silvestri. Now, this just pertaining to the mayor's thing, when you did mention about the streets, the through streets, but this adds to our condition is, we actually pay for everything, we have no city support. We pay for snow removal, upkeep, maintenance. So the roads are ours.
You have a private road.
Private roads. And that's just what I want to do.
They'll have a private road too. Private roads.
But I mean, it's not like a city street or.
Right. If we're going to talk about it, though, in theory, if we're going to talk about the theory behind it, we should say, private roads should be illegal, we should never have.
Right, but I just wanted to emphasize.
But we do, you're right.
It's not a city street.
And we've got them everywhere.
Okay.
They're just, they're not a good thing.
Whether it's a good thing or not, I'm just emphasizing as far as integrating, it's not like it's a blocked off public road.
Right.
It's a blocked off private road.
Only because we've allowed that over time, unfortunately. I mean, people who are here long before you and I.
Right.
And long before anybody in this room.
But it's a fact of life.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we have, we, do you have anything else to present? Do we have consensus to move it forward?
And we have both pieces, if you don't mind me asking. There's the annexation agreement modifications. And we had gone through them point by point at the last work session, and the one that we hadn't reached consensus on was the affordable housing contribution waiver.
Right.
So we have that one to discuss, and then the capacity fee waiver, are the two separate things.
We'll take the annexation agreement first.
Great.
So you say yes, you're waiting. Mr. Arden?
No. From the annexation agreement, we're moving it up by three units.
The modification, the modification. The modification to the, to the.
They're going to build anyway.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with the annexation, so.
So you're fine with the annexation?
No.
Okay. So we've got consensus, I agree on the annexation agreement. Now we'll take the.
Capacity fee waiver?
Capacity fee waiver. April?
And the only reason I'm doing this is because this is in the district, a part of it. It's his district, these are his residents. And I want to go with him now.
Okay, so our next steps is that we will schedule the public hearing for the annexation agreement modifications. They will also go back to Planning Commission for their final approval, now that we are aware of that.
On the annexation agreement.
On the annexation agreement. So you will see us back for that, and not the capacity fee waiver.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Council President, I think, and maybe this will come when we do the planning, when we get new zoning, but we are going to have to look at places that are surrounded by the county with infrastructure that is not ready for what is allowed inside the city limits. As I said earlier, this were up on Beegland Park Drive, this is a no brainer because it's all there. But this is surrounded by a short shortcut road that everyone's using. There's still no definitive about what the impact to the schools are. The traffic study says it's okay, but that's what the traffic study says, not the people who are sitting in the cars. It would behoove us to sit down and take a look and see if we can find these donut hole properties that are sitting in places that are just inadequate for that many people. I wish we owned something up on Beegland Park Drive that we could throw it on the table and said, swap it out for this one, because that, because that makes, that makes more sense.
And I think also, and we talked about this last time, this area right here, Merritt Mill Road, Tillman Road, Parker Road, all of that, there needs to be a comprehensive plan here in that area. We've got to figure out, because how much more can Merritt Mill Road take?
I think what this fails to acknowledge is that there is a comprehensive plan, and this is, this is all, you know, frankly, low-density development for the infrastructure that exists. It's the difference between, you know.
I agree with that on paper, that, I agree with it on paper. Sitting in the car, sitting in the school, sitting on the sidewalk, I don't agree with it.
Light timing issues, I mean, state highway issues. I mean, frankly, it's all just, it's all built and designed suburban and wrong. It's just, it's bad, it's poor planning, and it's what our forefathers gave us, and it never should have been built that way. And we're all stuck with it and trying to build something better. And it's such, it's a shame. It's a shame that it's, you know, what we're given. Now, what we could do is say, I mean, there are, there are all sorts of solutions from a zoning standpoint, if you comprehensively rezone. Now, you can't spot rezone, you can't say, ah, I want to change it for this neighborhood because I, because I got my house here and I don't want anybody else to have their house here. You can't do that, that's illegal. And you're going to lose every day, whether you're the city or neighbors, I mean, you will lose in court. Now, what you can do is have a conversation about, when you comprehensively rezone, you could say, we shouldn't build there anymore. We shouldn't build, we shouldn't build on the periphery of our community. Unfortunately, if you look at this, forget the municipal boundaries, just if you look at a map of this county, which you see is a lot of sprawl garbage that was poorly designed, poorly planned, poorly built. And I'm sorry, and I'm sure there are a lot of people who have invested entire careers in that that would tell you, no, it was good and it was the right thing to do. No, it wasn't. And by no objective measure was it the right thing to do. So we're stuck with roads that are crisscrossing illogically all over the place, designed, you know, like this is suburban Montgomery County, which by the way is all poorly planned as well. You know, I mean, it's just, it's just bad planning and, you know, there are ways to fix it. One thing that, you know, that I've thought about that we could consider is like an official street map, which I think we'd have to check with Maryland to figure out if that's constitutional in Maryland. Pennsylvania has them. Lancaster County has them. Official street maps essentially say, here's where the streets are going. Nobody can change it. This is what the streets are going to look like. You can build whatever you want, you know, within the density requirements and use requirements in between, but you don't get to lay out the streets, Mr. Private Property Owner. You don't get to lay out the streets because that's a public good that should be designed right, planned right. And I don't know whether or not that's legal in Maryland. And Mark, maybe you can help figure that out for us, but. But the official street maps have helped the very best communities in this country lay themselves out properly. And again, Lancaster is an example. Now, if you want your cul-de-sac neighborhood that doesn't connect to anybody else, you can't get that anymore in those places. But frankly, there are so many negative externalities on a community, on property values, on crime, on, and people think, you know, the opposite. People think that, no, cul-de-sac quiet communities reduces crime. No, it doesn't. It reduces connectivity, it reduces eyes on the street, it reduces accessibility for officers, it reduces patrol, it reduces effectiveness of patrol planning. It creates inaccessibility for young people to get to walk to school, to get to neighborhood, from neighborhood to neighborhood. And there are so many things that we do wrong because it's always been done that way that nearly every city in America is stuck with. We don't have to do it that way, there are alternatives and they have been adopted in certain places. And we, I think, should consider those things. It's going to be different, we're going to have some people that push back, but, you know, I think there's so much good that could come from it. There's so much good that could come from it. And, you know, a conversation like this might not even happen in that setting. It might not even happen because it can't.
Well.
Sorry, I get passionate about planning.
Couldn't tell. The only thing, the only. The only thing I can say is that I'm not sure what's going to happen. But somebody is going to develop that land. And then we may have nothing to do with it, which could be, that's my fear. My fear is, I see what we've gotten and I don't work for them, they have no stake in it, but I'm telling you, their product is a good product.
Yes, it is.
And my fear is that the next person that would come in to do it, if they don't do it, is going to not have the same kind of product.
Would the person, and let me ask you this.
Because it's private property.
We should probably have a, did I say charette?
Yeah, you did.
Being that said that word, we should really talk about how we can, you know, a stoplight and a turn lane may have made all the difference in all of this conversation for me in particular in the area. You know, a light at Parker and Tillman and a turn lane could have made all the difference. And that means there's something missing because I don't necessarily agree with everything that the mayor said. But if the person who comes in and who isn't doing affordable housing and they're doing market rate housing, would we be able to get concessions out of them as well? Would they come to the table and we'd have the exact same conversation with them as well? I think we've all brought up the, if this were somebody who wanted to make, you know, $175,000 townhouses, the discussion would be exactly the same.
Okay. Moving on. Overnight truck parking, Chief Duncan.
Better not be on Merritt Mill Lane there, chief. That's right. Because I'll be walking there.
Hope yours is very simple.
Wow, this is a pairing I would like to have been in the meeting.
All right.
So, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for entertaining us tonight. Sir, why don't you go right ahead? I do have to say that a lot of the legwork was done by my esteemed colleague here, so I'm going to yield and initiate the presentation.
Well, at the request of our city administrator, I started looking into what we could do to basically enforce what we already have in our city code, which is that commercial trucks are not allowed to park overnight in residential areas. And in, I know the memo that I forwarded, I referenced that section of code as well, it's 1032.030. And essentially what we're doing, we're not striking out anything that is currently in the code, we're just adding a section D which would specify a specific penalty. And I also have a table that is in the memo that each of you received, just with the initial penalty that we suggested would be $500 and then subsequent offenses would, that penalty would increase up to $1,000 for, within that calendar year that those offenses occurred. And then in looking at, a lot of what I spent my time doing was to come up with this fee table, was looking at what other cities around the nation have done. And so in Baltimore County, you can see on the chart, I've got Baltimore County, I've got Palm Coast, Florida, San Diego, California, Village of Hanover Park in Illinois, Town of Barnett in New Jersey, and Clark County, Washington. Each of them had a, I mean, the fines were all over the place. Some places, as you'll see on the table, were up to $1,000, some were up to $750. But what we've seen here is, and the chief would know more about this, my focus was solely on the policy itself, but in my discussions with our city administrator, we just realized that the issue is we have these trucks parking overnight like they're not supposed to do. And right now, there is no specific penalty that really carries any sort of weight to discourage them from doing so because we're not changing the law, the law is already on the books and if it were being obeyed, we would not have this issue. We probably wouldn't be before you this evening, but obviously that's not the case and now I would yield to the chief.
So I believe Nate's absolutely right, you know, we, right now, we currently issue a parking summons for this type of violation. But the, maybe we need to consider increasing some of these fines as they relate to this type of parking. We don't often get complaints, it's not one of the main issue, but, you know, when we do, it's typically in a residential area which causes major issues on that block or two for the residents that are trying to live their lives in that particular neighborhood. So I guess at this point, you know, I would seek some input and some guidance here.
The only question I have is, and this is just from where I go to work every day, North Point Drive, which is the city street, where our grocery receiving is on that back side of the store. Our, that's where a lot of our vendors come in and a lot of them now, they have to be there by three, four AM. And some of them are there for an hour, some, depending on what their business is, they're there. What's the concern about the street like North Point Drive?
I think mainly we're focusing on residentially zoned streets versus what's happening up there in North Point Drive. It's a different, differently zoned area.
Has there been an outbreak?
You'd be surprised. How many trucks, track and trailer?
I mean, I think
No.
If yes, is the answer.
Uh, no, not necessarily.
I think it comes in waves.
It does.
You know, several calls over an issue and then nothing for a longer time.
Yeah, there's nothing, there's no pattern.
Are they bringing a whole sixteen-wheeler up in there?
Sometimes.
Yeah, sometimes they do. And you'd be surprised. You'd be surprised how often you see them riding through communities, through Resident Jalen Road.
I know there's an issue by my house, but it's not in the city. And it's dangerous because they park, actually park on Cedar Lane.
Oh, yeah.
Before the circle. You know, the guy. Yep.
Take my girls to daycare.
And I will tell you, I've seen a couple of people that
Yep.
go out into the other lane.
They think they're bombing different.
It's bad.
Yeah. So, I mean, it is an issue. And I know that it used to be an issue until the guy moved down on, off Atene, by your old, by your house. But it's an issue, so. The other thing is the fines, I don't know if it's changed, but I know that even commercial drivers that work for logistics firms, they're responsible for those fines themselves personally. So this would certainly discourage me if I had to, first offense is what?
Five hundred dollars.
Five hundred. So I think it's six hundred, seven hundred. Yeah, that's, that's pretty hefty. That's pretty hefty. Any questions or comments? We have consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. That one's down. Thank you, Nate. Chief?
Job, Nate.
I think you're still here.
Yes, sir.
Nice job, Nate.
Thank you, Nate.
She should stay with her, Nate.
You're bad. No, I'll get it for you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. The next one's a good one. Go ahead.
So I am remaining here today to speak to you about a acquisition that we would like to obtain some support for. Certainly with all of the venues and different events that we're, that we currently have slated for this coming year and what that looks like for us as a city moving out into the future. We are requesting some assistance in patrol, specifically with an explosives detection canine. We do have the funding for it through grant monies and we are working to educate ourselves on the different requirements for this particular acquisition. But of course, we would need some support from the council to move forward.
Questions?
You're getting a dog, right? There's just nothing in here that says dog.
No. Canine.
Canine.
K nine.
K nine.
All right, but I was just sure whether or not you wanted the car for the canine.
We do not.
You want the dog that sniffs out?
Function canine.
It says the total cost of this canine.
Okay, but sometimes from the helicopter, when you look down and it says canine, that could
Yeah, we have vehicles.
That means canine is in the car. Any issues? Questions?
No.
You got it?
Thank you, sir. Counsel, thank you.
All right. Susan? We're going to talk about rubbish. My favorite, my favorite subject.
Good afternoon.
How are you?
Evening, ma'am.
Evening, ma'am. Set a criticism?
We currently have on the books legislation for grass that it's, I personally call it three strikes. If you get written up for a violation the first time, it has a ten-day compliance period. The second day, the second time is a seven-day compliance period. Then the third time, we just take a picture, hire a contractor, and we abate the violation. So we currently have that on the books for grass, weeds and sidewalks. And we need to do the same thing with rubbish because rubbish is a growing problem. I have some numbers here for you. I went back four years and you'll see how it's, it's increasing by about five hundred each year. So we need to do something different than we're doing now.
Thank you.
We need to make it in line with inconsistency.
Susan? Is it a quant, is it, does it have to be a quantity, a certain quantity?
Each.
No. In other words, when you, what determines a violation?
The definition of rubbish.
I was afraid you were going to say that.
Yes.
But is, it's the, is it the amount of rubbish?
No, it's
It could be one bottle?
Yes, but you have to use common sense when writing up.
So it's a, it's a common sense?
Yes, it's a common sense.
That's why, that's the answer I was looking for.
You're not getting hired as a code enforcement officer with questions like that.
If I had a code enforcement officer that wrote up one bottle in, on a property.
He'd be in trouble.
He'd guess.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Okay, so so that is the intent of this violation because as you see by these numbers, two thousand fifteen, we had seven hundred and twenty-six. Now, now, just so far, we're three-quarters into the fiscal year and we're at fifteen oh one already.
So you're looking at
I anticipate having two thousand.
Two grand.
Yeah, so something needs to be done because this is getting way too much for just one of the violations that we have. One of the many violations, the types that we have per year. So we need to do something to get a grip on this. And I do think that if we had what I just personally call the three strikes, it would really get people managing the property for rubbish.
When you say the three strikes, how do you?
As I explained, the first time in a fiscal year, I'm sorry, in a calendar year.
In accordance with what's going on here.
Yeah, I'm sorry, in the calendar year. Yeah, the first time that the code enforcement officer found a certain property in violation of having rubbish.
It's one hundred dollars for ten days. Is it aligned with what's written here?
It's, the corrective action compliance period would be ten days. And they would have to comply with that just as normal. So it's not just a warning that we're going to come back in ten days. They would have ten days to clean the rubbish up. And if they don't clean it, the city will clean it and bill them. And they would also get a municipal infraction for that, too. So in that calendar year, we would, if they're, they have rubbish again for the second time, their compliance period is only seven days. So they have a shorter period of time. So the same process happens again. So if we come back in that calendar year, if they have it for a third time or more, third time or consecutive, third or the tenth time we have to come there, we just take a picture and hire a contractor, clean it and bill them. And they get a municipal infraction.
And as, would it be prudent to make fees higher for multifamily units? Or are they considered, contemplated in this?
We can.
I mean, because when you think about it, if I, I'm managing an apartment complex, I'm on a different scale than the individual that owns a home. So for me, a hundred dollars isn't going to
Hurt them.
Get me in.
It's not going to sting them.
Who gets it? Who gets the homeowners, the management group?
The owner of the complex. There's, they're, multi-units are sometimes owned, they're owned usually two different ways. So I'm going to use the hemlock, because I know you're very familiar with that, as an example. They're owned individually. Say there's twelve units in there, they're owned by twelve different owners. So if we, in the common area, oftentimes there's a lot of rubbish. So if we have to perform a clean and lean, that bill is separated twelve ways. And it's equally divided and sent to twelve different owners. But if one person owned it, it would just be sent to the one owner.
Got you.
Is this residential mostly?
Yes, but
But there are
It's all, yeah. And this time of year, with the wind blowing, yeah, there's trash blowing everywhere. And, you know, things are acting as a net, so things are piling up everywhere. It's bad right now.
So Salisbury Commons, how would this impact, do you know Salisbury Commons?
I do.
How, and I mean, part of the issue with these communities is it's not that the rubbish remains, but it overflows.
Right, and blows.
And blows. So if you go to the one end of Salisbury Commons, it just looks like a net of trash. Yeah.
So they would receive a corrective action letter for rubbish. And it would, the letter would explain where the rubbish, like around the dumpster area and then all over the property. If they did not clean it in the time period, we would hire a contractor. If it was the first time, it'd be ten days. Again, in that calendar year, it'd be seven. The third time, we wouldn't even, just, we would just take a picture and just bill them. And then if it keeps happening, so just say if you keep calling and saying, this has happened six times this year, I'm so frustrated. We wouldn't even have to give them time to clean it. We would just snap a picture, hire a contractor, be cleaned within about a day or so. Yeah, and bill them.
And lean their property if they don't.
Exactly. So that's, that's the best part is that, so when we get complainants that are sick of seeing it, having to sit there for ten or more days, this way, once we reach that third threshold,
It's bang.
Bang, it's cleaned right away. So that's, this rubbish is blading and it's just an attractive nuisance to property. So we can just take care of it right away than having to sit.
And that may resolve the issue with not enough containers. Because if you're going to resolve the issue, you could buy, by the time you get four violations, you could buy another two dumpsters.
I would just say if we pass this, when you go to do the budget, because in years previous, we'd come back and say there's not enough, and this may be going back a little ways, there's not enough money in the leftover to hire. Just if you're going to do this, because I think you're going to have to, I think you're going to be hiring some people, let's just make sure we have in that line the money for
For the clean and lean.
Because we've had to go back in the past and put more money in.
So we have a potential new approach to that a little bit this year and we can talk through it at the budget table.
So as a resident, I could call and complain, is there a place where I could take a picture and send it to you?
Right to the department. In the city app?
That's a good idea.
So that old city app, which went away when the new website came up, we are putting a three-one-one app, which will allow you to do that. Because that app still had value in some way.
Oh, yeah.
So this will very much help the year issue that you've been having with the dumpsters.
Under Citizen Services, a citizen could go on there and in the drop-down menu, you can, you can mention a code issue like trash or something like that, more than, no door inside and things like that, all grass.
And I know that the issue that's been out to the Shiloh Hemlock area, that'll fix that third time, you know, we'll just take care of it.
Yeah, because it's, it's a lot of money on board to
Yeah. Because there's a hand, well, more than a handful, obviously, that you can tell. There's, we have a number of properties that we're just having to clean repeatedly and we just need to get something Yeah, we just need
Every day.
We just need stronger legislation to help us.
All right. Any other questions? Consensus?
Yep.
Consensus?
I would say I'm not opposed to stronger legislation. I don't know what that would look like, but I'm fine with this at this point.
Personally, I think that what we do is we see if it has an effect. If it doesn't have an effect, then we react.
And just so you know, that the municipal infraction amount is one hundred dollars. If it's a property that we have trouble with, we can always issue two days' worth and the second day, we can always double to two hundred. So if it's a, it's a chronic issue, we can always do that.
Okay. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
I did say we have consensus, didn't I? We do have consensus. Okay. Anything for the good of the order? Hearing, there is none. I will call for a vote to convene closed session in accordance with the annotated code of Maryland three dash three oh five B, seven, eight, and fourteen. One to cons I have to read it. One, one to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice on a legal matter. Two, to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation. And three, before a contract is awarded or bids are open to discuss matter directly related to a negotiating strategy or the contents of a bid-bid proposal, the public discussion and disclosure will adversely impact the ability of the public body to participate in the public bidding process. Now I'll entertain a vote. Mr. Irtan? Seconded by Ms. Jackson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.